Call to order the meeting of the common council for Tuesday, August 2nd. Clerk?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. We have 12 present in the meeting and 12 voting in presence. The civic clerk.
Very well. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and then you can be seated for the invocation led by Alder Scannell.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alder Scannell.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to read a poem by Bobby Frost. It's a Christmas poem. So I realized that may be, you know, I figured, you know, I remember being a young and someone telling me you should celebrate Christmas every day of the year, and I think this poem is most apropos. I would just like to introduce it by, it has a subtitled "A Boethian." Boethian means after Boethius, and Boethius was a late Roman senator, an early medieval philosopher, whose philosophy inspired the poem. And it is titled "To a Young Wretch." Great Christmas title. As gay for you to take your father's axe as take his gun, rod, to go hunting, fishing, you nick my spruce until its fiber cracks. It gives up standing straight and goes down swishing. You link arm in its arm, and you lean across the light snow homeward smelling green. I could have bought you just as good a tree to frizzle resin in a candle flame, and what a saving it would have meant to me. But tree by charity is not the same as tree by enterprise and expedition. I must not spoil your Christmas with contrition. It's your Christmases against my woods, but even where thus opposing interests kill, they are to be thought of as opposing goods, oftener than as conflicting good and evil, which makes the war god seem no special dunce for always fighting on both sides at once. And though in tinsel chain and popcorn rope my tree, a captive in your window bay, has lost its footing on my mountain slope, and lost the stars of heaven, may, oh may, the simple star it lifts against your ceiling help me accept its fate with Christmas feeling. So as we debate here, and get all heated and hot and worked up in our positions, let's always remember our common humanity, and we're all fighting for the common good. Thank you.
Well said. Thank you, Alder. And it is Christmas every day for Alder Morgan, so I know he appreciates that as well. Onto approval of the minutes. Motion has been made by Alder Galvin, seconded by Alder Stevens, to approve the minutes from our last meeting. Any changes? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. The ayes have it, the minutes are approved. Approval of the agenda?
So move.
Motion made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Steyer. Any changes here? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. The ayes have it, the agenda is approved. Report by the mayor. Just two quick things. National Night Out this evening. Many of us are missing some of the functions going on around town and in our neighborhoods, but wanted to extend some thanks to all the Neighborhood Association board members and attendees for coming out tonight and putting on some great events for the people of Green Bay. Thanks to Chief for carting me around to at least a few of the National Night Outs over at Three Sisters, and then we were at Mather Heights, and then for the first time, First United Church of Christ on Webster had one as well. So thanks to you, thanks to them, you know, just, you know, again, sending the message that it is such an important thing to do, not just once a year, but all year round. It's really one of the, you know, the great qualities of our neighborhood associations is bringing people together on a regular occasion to just get to know one another and celebrate the city and the neighborhood. So thanks to everybody who played a hand in making those events possible tonight. Also, just wanted to thank our Alders and staff and community members for coming out to Bay Beach last week for State of the City, another opportunity just to celebrate what we've done collectively as a community and as a council, and so just wanted to thank everybody who played a role in putting that event together. In particular, the Parks Department for, of course, hosting us at Bay Beach. Thanks to Alder Campbell for having us in the district. But yeah, just a nice night for the city and appreciate everybody who had a hand in pulling that together. So with that, we'll move along to announcements from our council. Alder Burnett.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to invite you all to the Salvation Army's Ray and Joan Crock Community Center. They will be hosting the inaugural International Community Festival on September 16th from 3:00 PM to 8:00 PM. Bring your family and friends and head to the Crock Center on Lime Kiln Road. Event will focus on celebrating the diversity of people who live here in northeastern Wisconsin. Had a chance to go there today to look at the layout, and it's going to be an incredible festival. Around-the-world cultural booths and storytellers and games from across the world, crafts really highlighting the diversity within the Green Bay community. So if you can get there on September 16th from 3:00 until 8:00, look forward to seeing you out there. Thank you.
I will be there. Thank you, Alder. Alder Eck.
Yes, I just want to make sure everybody knows about the Brown County Fair coming up August 17th through the 21st. It's always a great time.
Absolutely. Thanks for the reminder. Alder Morgan?
I'd like to acknowledge and congratulate a young Green Bay man who I got to know quite well, Max Wagner. He graduated from Preble High School in 2020, went on to Clemson and had a very successful baseball career. He was just recently drafted by the Baltimore Orioles in the 42nd pick, and I was lucky enough to share a dugout with him for three years, but as I tell everyone, the greatest thing I did for him is I stayed out of his way. He has God-given natural talent, and he grew up in the house of Wagner. His father made him what he is today, I feel, and as I say, I'm very proud of this young man, and now he has a million eight reasons to be thankful, and everything happened too. So just want to acknowledge and congratulate him.
Absolutely. Congratulations to him and to you, Alder Morgan, for being the coach. Any other announcements? Alder Scannell. I did not see.
I'd just like to comment about National Night Out, and I'm wondering if in the future, I mean, we know it's always the 2nd August, or 1st August, in the first Tuesday in August. There we go. I can talk now. If we could schedule our meetings accordingly, that would be super duper, because I do feel bad we're missing out on that. And also, the Kitty Carnival.
Yeah.
You know, the kitty and me is not Carnavaline, and that is not good.
Mm-hmm.
So.
No, it's, that's a fair point and something that we've discussed internally, so hopefully we'll have a good plan for next year.
Super duper. Thanks.
Any other announcements? All right, seeing none, we'll, I don't think we have any recognitions or awards, so we'll move along to appointments. Entertaining motion on reappointments?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Galvin. Any discussion on the reappointments? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. The ayes have it, and those appointments are confirmed. Onto new appointments?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stevens. Discussion here? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. The ayes have it, and the new appointment is confirmed. Onto ordinances?
Motion to suspend the rules.
Second reading for adoption. Before we get there, Alder Hutchison?
Yes, I'd like to pull K-1.
And hold that over to?
I'd like to hold it over to Plan Commission. A lot of edits have occurred, and it's not the same document that came before common council before.
Right. So Alder Hutchison makes a motion to refer this item back to the Plan Commission, seconded by Alder Johnson. Any discussion or any questions for staff on this? Otherwise, just to say that Director Stuck Schulte, Director Grenier, and a number of staff have been continuing that conversation with the home builders. It's been a really fruitful one, so hoping to be able to bring back an ordinance that everybody is agreeable to, hopefully in time for our next meeting, August 30th, but if not, certainly by September. So with that, there was a motion made by Alder Hutchison. Was there a second for it? Yes, there was, by Alder Johnson. Any other discussion? Seeing none, in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. The ayes have it. That item has been referred back to the Plan Commission.
Motion to suspend the rules.
Alder Scannell makes a motion to suspend the rules and take up items K-2 and 3 with one roll call vote. That was seconded by Alder Johnson. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. The ayes have it, the rules are suspended. Motion to adopt made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Eck. Discussion? Seeing none, we will use the board. And those are adopted unanimously. Onto report of the redevelopment authority. Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stevens. Any discussion on this item? Alder Johnson?
Broken record. I just need the record to reflect an abstention. The applicant is a member of my executive committee that oversees my compensation.
Very well. Thanks, Alder. That will be noted. Any other comments on this item? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. The ayes have it. That report has been approved. INS?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stevens. Any items here to be handled separately? Item 1. Any others? Item 1 will be handled separately. Hearing none others, all in favor of approving the remainder of that report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. The ayes have it. Item 1 will be handled separately. Motion on item 1? Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Galvin. The item was pulled by Alder Eck. Alder Campbell, you have the floor.
I'd like to make a motion to open the floor for discussion. We had a little bit in committee. We had some people down by the stadium district, and as much as overnight parking seems to be hit and miss, some people like it. I can see the concerns about people around the district, so I have someone here that is from the district that'd like to speak, and then parking maybe in general, and I have a person from my district also that would come in, and I had one more, but they couldn't make it.
Okay. So Alder Campbell has made a motion to open the floor, seconded by Alder Burnett. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. The ayes have it, the floor is open.
I don't know if I got the word across to the fact. I know we're holding it, but the discussion that we caught in committee is probably the proper place, but, and I think we discussed about having some more parameters, but I think getting more feedback from people from around the town, I think, would be a good balance going in. That's why I'd like to open the floor.
Okay. Thanks, Alder. And just a reminder, if folks want to speak to the council, just state your name and address, and then you can begin.
Ronson Smith, 1525 Smith Street in Green Bay.
If you could just pull the mic up a little bit. There you go.
Ronson Smith, 1525 Smith Street, Green Bay.
Perfect.
Overnight parking, while overnight parking has not been a substantial issue with me and most of the people on my block would be opposed to being required to have parking v. permit, I do have constant issues with people that come to use Farland Park, the, I'm sorry, the Farland Park Playground and Splash Pad that was installed not 40 feet from the dead end some 20 years ago, right next to people's homes and right next to the street. Those people continually block my driveway. As we all know, the city ordinances say no one can park within four feet of someone's driveway or within 15 feet of a fire hydrant, but in the dead end where I live, this happens daily in the summer. If I call the police, I'm always told the police have, the police have no officers available, and your complaint takes a very low priority. Then I wait hours for them to arrive. By that time, the parking violators have left. Although I would assume if a police officer lived where I do, the issue would not be an issue. Okay. But citizens don't have the authority of a police officer, so we have to suffer. But to correct the long-existing parking issue, it takes real enforcement, which never ever happens. Even though I can't count how many times I have been told they would increase patrols, those never happen either. The city does not proactively enforce parking or, quite frankly, any city ordinances, although the Green Bay Parking Utility people do what they can, but with very limited staffing and even more limited hours they work. But the issue, but the issues that do take place regarding overnight on this block are as follows. Drug dealing. Takes place basically once a day at night, mostly in the evening. Vehicles come down to the dead end, park in plain sight, wait for other vehicles to arrive, quick exchanges take place, vehicles leave. It's not rocket science as to what they are doing. I call the police, and then I am told that all officers are out on priority calls, so no love, of course. Then two, I even, I recently, a couple weeks ago, I even witnessed a pimp and a prostitute doing business on my dead end at about 4 o'clock in the afternoon. Okay? Did I call the police? No. Why? They won't show up. So it's frankly just pointless to even pick up the phone anymore.
Mr. Smith, I appreciate the comments, but this item is on overnight parking, so if you could just kind of zero in on that?
Well, okay, well, I guess most of my comments are not regarding to that issue, so.
Okay.
Although I would like to, at some point, be able to address everything else I got.
Sure. Well, thanks for your testimony. Do we have any other members of the public who would like to speak to this item? No, I was just asking the public. And if you could just state your name and address for the council?
Not quite as tall as that, gentlemen, so we won't have a problem with that. My name is Kevin Burkle. Burkle's one block over, 1007 Tony Cannadale Run. I am here in regards to, and I've been fighting with this issue for quite some time. I purchased a property in 2013, and we're having a big issue with the parking on Tony Cannadale, and I'm just here to see if we can address that street on game days, both sides of the street, from front to back, all the way around Stadium View and back through. If anybody's ever been down there for a game day after dark, well, number one, we've lost all our streetlights, and then there's no sidewalks there. It's coming, but, you know, I don't know when it's coming. So the last couple of years, it's kind of been a, an issue with, you know, parking on that street, because it's, you know, the nighttime stuff, there's, it's dangerous. I've taken several videos of it. I approached, I talked to Tom Shermans quite often about it, and so I'm wondering if there's something we can do to no park, just that street, you know, all the way around Stadium View, that, and keep that corner on Stadium View that, where the hotel's going up, which it's going to stop anyway. But the parking that goes on there during the day too is another issue with semis delivering and what have you. So wondering if that can be addressed as soon as possible before the season starts.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
You bet. And just, well, again, I mean, we really want to zero on this overnight parking issue, so, you know, just would suggest to you maybe contacting the Alder for the, I don't know if that's Alder Johnson. Okay. Well, I don't know if we really.
All right. Kevin, we're working on it.
Oh, okay.
I've been talking with traffic engineer and others.
Okay, thanks. Appreciate it. I didn't know that I was dying with you there.
Yeah, yeah, no problem at all. Entertaining a motion to close the floor if there isn't any other testimony from the public? Motion to close the floor, maybe Alder Galvin, seconded by Alder Steyer. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. The ayes have it, the floor is closed. Onto the item at hand? Any? Motion to approve. Any other discussion on that? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. The ayes have it, and that item has been approved. Onto protection and policy?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stevens. Any items here to be handled separately? We did. From the previous report?
Yeah.
Yes.
We approved the, okay.
We did, yep. So any items here to be handled separately under protection and policy? Seeing none, all in favor, will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. The ayes have it, that report has been approved. Granting operator licenses? Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stevens. Any names to be handled separately or abstentions? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. The ayes have it. Plan Commission?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Weary. Items here to be handled separately? Round P? That's right. Any under the Plan Commission to be handled separately? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. The ayes have it. Report of the Plan Commission has been approved. Finance Committee?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Galvin. Items here to be handled separately? 4 and 7. Any others? All right. Hearing none others, all in favor of approving the remainder of that report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. The ayes have it, the report has been approved with the exception of items 4 and 7. Motion has been made to approve item 4, seconded by Alder Galvin. Item was pulled by Alder Burnett.
Yes.
You have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. I am on the Finance Committee, and I asked a few questions at the time regarding the matching funds. Someone had reached out to me. So it looks like the consultant referenced in the contract or the grant acceptance is Slipstream, and I guess the question for somebody at staff is, how did Slipstream get into the picture? Was this a bid process? Are they the chosen consultant, and who chose them?
Slipstream is a nonprofit consulting group that's, well, they're based in Madison. They used to be called the Energy Center of Wisconsin, if you recall that a while ago. They, we worked with them on the grant proposal together, and they are contributing matching funds to the project. They've done similar projects with other municipalities in the state of Wisconsin where they're listed as a grant partner, and then we work together to implement and carry out the plan, to carry out the project.
Will there be any city dollars going directly to Slipstream as part of their consultant services?
Well, the grant funds from the PSC will be paid, that's for the consultant, and some of the matching funds as well.
So Slipstream will, I know they're consultants, but they'll benefit financially from the arrangement in some capacity?
Yes.
Okay. With that, I'd like to make a motion just to refer back to the Finance Committee. I'd like to, you know, engage in a bid process or something so we can see if other consultants would be interested in partnering with the city. So my motion would be to refer to committee.
Motion has been made to refer this item back by Alder Burnett, who was seconded by Alder Campbell. Director Grenier, I think, had some comments to offer?
Yes. The services that are being provided by Slipstream are professional services, and as such, professional services are not subject to bidding. It's largely based on quality-based selection, but there is no true bid process because they're not a, they're not a contractor who's providing, say, a construction service. So professional services are exempt from bidding.
I, I, yeah, thank you. I appreciate that. Director Grenier, I'd still like to send it back to committee. We need to get some other consultants who can propose similar services. I know there are probably several out there. The person who reached out to me with concerns with this particular consultant was their level of political activism. I mean, they have, and I did a quick perusal of their social media feed, they have taken some rather radical statements and positions, and I think as a city, in regards to climate, climate issues and green infrastructure, I would like to see a little more balance in the consultants that we're partnering with, and I know there are plenty out there that don't take such a political position on these matters. So I'd like to still refer it back for discussion at the committee level.
If, I don't know if Director Grenier or Ms. Schmitz wants to weigh in on this, but I would imagine this could complicate whether or not we'll actually receive the grant funding from the Public Service Commission because Slipstream was part of this application. So, Ms. Schmitz?
That is correct. So because Slipstream is listed as one of the grant partners, if we decide, hey, we don't, Slipstream isn't going to be part of this project, then essentially the grant is not what we proposed, and that would not, we would not be awarded those funds. The other thing I would like to say is Slipstream does not do work in green infrastructure. They work on energy efficiency, they work on renewable energy, they work on efficient building science, and reducing carbon footprints through those measures.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Schmitz. We have Alder Scannell and then Alder Galvin.
Just a question for staff. How is it that we chose this organization, if there's others out there, what process do we go through to choose, and how'd that come about? Get some information on that, please.
Ms. Schmitz?
Grant, I've been, I've had my eye on this grant opportunity for some time, before I even joined the city, because I used to work for the Focus on Energy Program. Focus on Energy does a huge amount of work with Slipstream, and Focus on Energy is the statewide energy efficiency and renewable energy program. So I was aware of Slipstream Services. I talk with them on a regular basis because I'm in sustainability and resiliency. So I, I mean, I talk with a lot of people. They approached us to see if we would be interested in doing a joint grant application, and I started exploring different, you know, opportunities to potentially partner with the city, the water utility, and Green Bay Metro Transit, because there aren't a lot of grant proposals with that particular combination, and that is a large, that's a huge reason of why we were awarded the funds, is because it was an innovative collaboration. Slipstream has a ton of experience with leading cities through this process of creating a clean energy plan, a comprehensive energy plan. It goes under many different names.
Any other questions or comments, Alder Scannell?
Just that, I don't favor sending this back. I mean, I mean, I don't want to play politics with city business. I think this is playing politics with city business. This company is not doing anything political in our city, and this is, to upset this apple cart because of whatever politics they play elsewhere, I mean, that's their constitutional right, whether it's left, right, in between, or whatever, and I don't want to get involved in that. If they're a qualified group doing what we want, and we've got this all in place now, I'm not in favor of upsetting that apple cart just because they lean one way or another. I don't really care. Makes no difference to me. So I don't, or sending back. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Galvin and then Alder Campbell?
Thank you, Your Honor. Ms. Schmitz, have you ever worked with this company before? I know you said you've been in contact with them, but in your previous occupations, have you ever worked with anybody from this company?
Yes.
Have they, and is, how many times would you say you've worked with them?
Well, professionally, I've worked with them when, for about eight years, when I worked for a utility, and I led the technical education efforts between the utility and Slipstream. So I worked with them then. So I worked with them then, um, basically delivering various types of um energy-related education, energy efficiency and renewable energy to industrial customers in northeast Wisconsin. Um, they're very professional, um, they are 100% a collaborative organization. We will be leading this project, not the consultant. And the second time I worked with them was uh through the Focus on Energy Program in a similar capacity, when I was an energy advisor for the focus group.
Thank you, and during any of those times over eight years and all the other different jobs you had, uh, energy, education, um, did they ever ask you to get involved in politics or support certain political people or certain political agendas or to hand out political material or post any political material on any of your websites or material or anything like that?
No.
Did they ever bring up politics as part of their work with you?
No.
Okay, thank you. Um, I would ask Alder Burnett, if this is going to become, then, a question every time we hire outside help is that we have to ask what people's political affiliation is, um, what they do, if their company supports certain political people or parties or things like that? If that's going to be, become part of the process, then, uh, when we're working with outside anything, construction companies, law firms, I mean, you name it, I'm, I'm just, I'm, I'm wondering what makes you think that whatever political things they do on the side has to do with what the work we're doing here? And why we have to send it back and potentially lose uh the grant money and, and the grant altogether?
Is that rhetorical or?
No, that's, that's an actual question.
Alder Burnett?
I mean, if he's got some information from this unknown party that, that would help me change my mind, I'll, I'll support this.
Well, thanks for the question, I mean, quite frankly, if they're advising the city, if they're helping us implement a, a climate process or energy efficiency process and their political opinions, which are rather strong, impact the amount of advice or the type of advice uh that they're giving us, I think that's a concern, especially if they stand to profit one way or the other from the grant that we're accepting. Just because they're, they're a consultant doesn't mean that their advice that they're providing us isn't tainted in some way from their strong um political beliefs. So, no, I, I don't anticipate questioning every single thing that comes before us, but let's be real, we live in highly political times and the climate change, the emergency or the energy efficiency um science is debatable. I mean, I never want to get to the point where we can't question some of the political motives of people that we're partnering with. So I think it's completely acceptable in this case to question some of the advice that they're giving us as consultants before we, you know, take them on as consultants, especially because they're going to receive dollars if we accept the grant to fund their activities.
As, uh, Ms. Schmitz has told us that in the over eight years of her working with them, she's never seen anything like that. And I would trust that if we do agree to this contract and they do try to, I don't know, um, implement some kind of political agenda through what they're doing for us, that she would alert us to that and make us aware of it so that we could take action. I just, um, I, I'm, I'm just at a loss here. I mean, uh, what she just said is just because they have strong political beliefs, I don't see, is there any evidence that this person told you where they've done this in other jobs that they've, that they've worked on? Or you just suspect because they have strong political beliefs that you don't necessarily agree with, that we should look into this harder?
Exactly, that's why I referred it back. And I'm not saying that they're not worthy of going with, but we certainly could open, open up the possibility of getting other consultants to perhaps partner with.
And are we going to check their political backgrounds then? Or are we going to wait for someone to talk to us?
If someone comes to me with a concern, Alder Galvin, I'm just bringing it up for a discussion. They have legitimate concerns based on how extreme this group seems to be in their political advocacy. Can we trust their opinions being impartial and unbiased if they have a political agenda?
Well, and, and I guess that's my, my concern, we know who this company is, we can check them out. I don't know who this person is, I don't know what they've told you, and I don't know what evidence they have to make us think that we should go through a whole lot more work and possibly lose this to, to, to satisfy that one person. I mean, we've seen a lot of that, like you said, uh, this politically charged arena we find ourselves in, and we've seen the amount of money and time and energy that's been put in to examine accusations that have proved to be groundless time and time again. And it's, how much of the city do we put at risk for one person who has an opinion about another person's political beliefs? This is supposed to be nonpartisan, I would be right there next to you if you could say, look, this is what they did on this project and this is what they did on this project, and I would say, boy, if they did that, I want nothing to do with them. Because I've had enough of this partisan politics stuff. But if it's just one person doesn't like their political beliefs and believes maybe something might be going on, I find that not enough to sway me to, to, to take action on this, thank you.
Thanks, Alder, I think it might be helpful, if you could, Ms. Schmitz, to kind of zero in on the work that they're actually going to be doing. It's a comprehensive energy planning grant, so without getting overly technical, if you could just kind of walk the council through the scope of the work that they'll be engaged in?
Um, the first phase of the project will be uh community involvement, community engagement. And that includes um some surveys that have not been designed yet um to engage the residential community and also the business community. We plan on holding two virtual workshops as well for that engagement. Um, the plan is to utilize a lot of different avenues, whether it's through our business districts, um, whether it's through the um Aging and Disability Resource. We want to hear from the community, all different types of community members about what they see as um a vision for Green Bay i- in clean energy. So this is not just limited to community or city operations, this is making recommendations, not um, you know, broad recommendations for the community, but specific recommendations when it comes to city operations. So there'll be energy audits. The water utility is the third largest water utility in the state. And utility costs, I believe, I wish Nancy were here because she would tell me, but I believe it's their second highest operating, that's their second highest cost, is utilities. So we'll be looking at doing energy audits um in the water utility for their operations, which will help make water rates more affordable for the community, uh, for anyone who uses Green Bay water. Um, Green Bay Metro Transit is going, is looking um at, and they've already been exploring this, Patty and her team at electrification opportunities within their fleet. We'll also be looking at electric, electrification opportunities within the city's fleet and cost-benefit analysis of what that might mean, lo- long-term costs, long-term cost savings. Um, and then we'll also be doing a number of building audits. The, the city has undergone quite a few energy audits already in the past through energy efficiency, community block grant dollars. So we won't necessarily, um, you know, do an entire deeper dive on all of the city's facilities. We'll also be looking at the possibility and the feasibility of renewable energy on different buildings within the city. And, um, you know, this is, this is many departments that are working on this, besides Public Works and then the two other partners. We have people from Community and Economic Development, from their outreach team, helping with this. We have IT, um, the plan is to create a dedicated website so that people have a forum to be able to put their comments in and their recommendations, so it's, it's very broad. But there's going to be very specific deliverables for, for this project. And it'll be a roadmap for the city over the next 10 to 15 years to implement, um, whether it's energy efficiency, renewable energy, um, and, and energy conservation.
Great, thank you. Uh, Alder Campbell and then Alder Scanell?
We'll be in this far down the list here, I, I think Alder Burnett has questioned some of my stuff. I'd like to know, um, what cities were you talking about before, how long ago? And uh, I did look up their Facebook page and uh, they do talk about the Green New Deal, they do talk about carbon footprint, and they do talk about 2050 and their goals. And they, it's all there, I don't know, you said they're not part of it, but you don't have to dig in too deep to see that they're leaning one side. So I have a question about that too, till I looked up that page, didn't seem like a lot of money, other than that's a lot of consulting.
The question is, which municipalities in the state they've worked with?
Yeah.
I don't have this memorized off the top, you know, all of them off the top of my head. But most recently, they worked with the cities of McFarland, Sun Prairie, they have an active project going on with Sun Prairie right now. Um, there was three or four communities within Dane County that, they were smaller communities and they banded together to do a comprehensive energy plan. Um, they also received grant dollars through the PSC for that. Um, so that's one example of a community, you know, a community-wide energy plan. They contract with almost every investor-owned utility in the state of Wisconsin for their education programs. They contract, um, they, they're a research-based organization, which is really how they started. I mean, they've done probably the most work in the Midwest on cold climate energy efficiency for homes. Uh, I know they, they've worked with the state of Minnesota as well. Um, so, I mean, as far as communities go, I, I wish I had, you know, the, you know, all of them in my head for you. Um, but what I said is, is what I'm remembering right now.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
It just seems so many unknowns here and a roadmap to somewhere, but it's so open and it's so far away. I realize someday we have to get into it, but, you know, this isn't, uh, you know, it, it seems pretty biased on my side, it all sounds good and we all want green, but, you know, what's the reality of it all here? And, you know, we have a great plan to go, all I heard is a grocery list, it's going to be really, really expensive. And I'm just looking out for our tax citizens.
Thanks, Alder, did you have an additional comment?
Uh, what I was going to say was, this, this whole process of getting to where we are right now has gone through Sustainability Commission. This, this, this is more than just a staff effort. Um, the 2050 is a goal that the, that City of Green Bay has as well. This isn't just the state of Wisconsin, we, we have that goal as well, to be carbon neutral by 2050. And you're right, if we don't start now, it's going to be harder to catch up with that, it's a goal. And those recommendations will come with costs and it'll come with what the potential, you know, without having quotes, they're not going to go out and get quotes for us for all of these projects, but there will be short-term projects to implement, mid and long-term, with, with the savings that's associated with that. And the cost of energy is never going to go back down, it's not. So everything that we can do right now is going to help the people in Green Bay and the businesses in Green Bay and our own operations.
Okay, thank you.
One thing, one thing I'd just like to add to that, it sounds like everything that you're saying is everything that our city staff does already, why do they need someone holding their hand, showing them what to do? I, 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 I just see, I mean, not that we don't, city staff doesn't do a great job and maybe we're overloaded, but to bring somebody else in and say, hey, this works in our town, well, I would think that's the research of most of the staff to find that out too. And I, I mean, I get, I get it, but it just seems to reach outside of the plan to have someone share their booyah recipe with you, you know? Uh, it just seems...
Recipe for every community and that's why staff is, that's why some of my time is an in-kind match towards the project. I'm going to be, I'm heavily involved with this, will be heavily involved with this project. Um, and the other staff from the other departments that I mentioned as well. Um, my feeling is when, when we hire consultants, it's to help guide us through the process. They, you know, because we're collaborative, we're not just, you know, sitting back and waiting for the end product to arrive. So it's, uh, projects, I think this project will be implemented and, you know, it has to be finished within 12 months. There's a lot of different competing priorities that come up for city staff over the course of a year. And I think this will help us get it done in that, in that timely manner.
Thanks, onto Alder Eck and then Alder Hutchison.
So I was trying to, I was looking through the document and I saw a date of June 30th, 2023, is that the start date?
No, that would be the end date, and it really depends on when the grant is, the grant agreement is executed. We have 12 months, um, you know, if we need to extend it, they, they can make exceptions, but that would be the end date.
Okay, so it, when would it start if it was approved?
Well, if it's approved this evening and then the grant agreement is signed, you know, it would probably start later this month.
Okay, um, and the next Finance Committee is at the end of this month, correct? Okay, so I just wondered if it would, you know, it's a couple of weeks out, to give more chance for, for it to be talked about. And, thank you.
Yep, thanks, Alder, Alder Hutchison and Alder Stoyer.
Um, thank you, so we're talking about a grant of $87,000 and matching funds of $56,000. It's kind of a chunk of money, but it's not huge, it's regarding a very important thing. Uh, energy efficiency is apolitical, it's what we all do. We go around our house and we turn lights off, we make a decision if we're going to turn the air on or off. It's apolitical, it's how we live. And this is taking something apolitical and bringing it to our city to solve issues that are costly. And it's not going to get any better. So to delay on this for any reason, I don't think really makes a lot of common sense. It may make political sense, but this is an apolitical idea in my mind. Let's get started with this work, because it's not soon enough, thank you.
Thank you, Alder, Alder Stoyer, then Alder Johnson.
Thank you, Your Honor, um, Ms. Schmitz, I just wanted to ask, um, are there other firms out there that you've worked with over time that like Slipstream that do the same type of work in the state? Or have you worked with other groups like this? Or does this Slipstream seem to be the leader in some of the things that we're trying to work on?
I would say they're one of the leaders, but there's certainly, there's certainly other, other firms out there.
Right, okay, I guess, you know, and I, I sit on sustainability and I know we talked about this, so, um, I would, if you could re- refresh me as far as Slipstream getting the nod for this project, were the, were the only ones that kind of went forward with this or was there any, any other input from other groups?
There was no other input from other groups.
Nobody else put an interest in, okay. Alright, uh, that's all I have for now, thank you.
Thanks, Alder, Alder Johnson, then Alder Scanell for a second time?
Thank you, Mayor, um, Ms. Schmitz, you, you had indicated that um, this grant was submitted with them as a partner and it was awarded in that capacity.
Correct.
Correct, so, so, uh, and as someone who writes grants, I know oftentimes when you change your grant partner, the grant is dissolved and you gotta start all over again and maybe you get it, maybe you don't. Uh, I mean, does this grant kind of go through a process, are there like windows of when they, they award this or is it a rolling basis?
It's an annual um grant program through the Office of Energy Innovation, which is Public Service Commission of Wisconsin. And um, it's an, it's, it's done annually, so no, it's not rolling, we wouldn't be able to necessarily go back. Um, one of the advantages of where we're at right now with this grant, this comprehensive energy planning, is that the PSC has three different categories of grants. This one, the comprehensive energy planning, they have energy efficiency and demand response, which is to do actual project implementation, so if we wanted to redo the lights in this room, okay, that's just an example. And then the third one is energy, um, energy storage. So, you know, if we had generation and wanted to store batteries on our, for our police station a- as a critical facility or something like that, those three categories. So getting this grant and implementing this grant tees us up for more opportunity for the other two categories.
Okay, uh, so really, if we, we send this back and we try to explore alternative partners, the reality is the grant would likely not be awarded because we didn't submit the grant with other partners. Um, are, so they're going to come up with a list of recommendations, are there any recommendations that at the staff level you would implement without city council oversight?
Help me understand that question. Help me understand that question.
So pretty much they're gonna come up with a list of recommendations and they're, they're gonna bring that to you and say, hey, we should do XYZ. It's likely those recommendations will cost money, in which case, they're gonna come back to city council anyway, right?
Director Grenier, yeah, if you wanna just explain that.
Yeah. So, so this fear that maybe there's kind of this political motive that's gonna steer us down a wrong direction.
Sure.
Council's going to have that opportunity to review and, and, and look at any types of recommendations that come out of this before we spend any more money, right?
I would agree with that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would agree with that. Unless some of the recommendations are, you know, no cost as far as, you know, you know, having education or information available to the citizens of Green Bay via digital format or something like that, where we're not paying, you know, to actually implement a, an HVAC project or...
Here's how to use less power, which is...
Right, right, energy education.
I don't know if that's a bad thing, right?
Right, right.
Okay, so, and, and, and as we talked about, energy consumption dollars are only going up. You know, and I, I care about taxpayer dollars, too. And there's a reason we, as a body, we created the Sustainability Commission. We created the Resiliency Coordinator position, your position. And we set, we passed, this body adopted a resolution to be carbon-free by 2050. And it just doesn't make sense to me that we would handcuff you with being able to move some of those things forward. So I don't know, maybe it's because it's a light agenda and we don't have anything else to talk about, but I've never seen us talk about awarding contracts, consulting contracts, in, in this depth. And, and so I, I'm against referral because I, I think that we have so many other mechanisms in place to overcome any type of political, political discussion that might need to occur down the road. This is really recommendations that are being made to our staff and our staff does not necessarily act on them. They're gonna come back and request funding, they're gonna come back and request a policy change. All those things we're gonna oversee again. So it's really, so to me, this vote of referral tonight is one about either, either you wanna accept the grant or you don't. I think referring is really just a vote to say, no, we don't want the grant. And so for that reason, I'm, I'm opposed to referral, because I do think we need to move on this.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Scannell and then Alder Galvin for a second time.
Yes, I, I wanna pick up on the word believe. That there, the people believe there might be some shenanigans going on here. I, I wanna know what is. We've got this proposal right here, show me where the shenanigans are in this proposal. What is, what in this proposal is political? We can take it out or we can kill the whole thing if that's what's required. But if there's nothing political in this right here, then the only thing we're doing is killing it. Cuz to refer it back, the only reason to do that is to consider somebody else. If we take somebody else, this is done. So, and, and, and again, I, we're playing politics, we are playing politics. Yes, we are. I remember when I first got elected, when my, my Walmart was coming in. And it was in my district and there were many people who opposed Walmart. And I, there were many people who opposed it because, for political reasons. And a lot of people thought that I was with them because I was a liberal. And I kept telling them, I, I don't care if I'm supporting someone who supports causes I don't believe in. That's got nothing to do with this job. It's, is this a smart development for Green Bay, yes or no? And I tried to work with Walmart to get the project through, because Walmart, as a retailer, did offer our downtown a lot. We don't have retail downtown. And many of my constituents wanted it. But to turn 17 acres of downtown property and pave over most of that for parking lot is just not smart. It was a practical decision, not a political one. And if we're gonna start looking, as, as we brought up, at the politics behind other groups, that is witch hunting. That is playing politics with city business. We should be looking at what's offered us and accept it on its value. And if groups then are politicizing one way or the other, I can deal with that in my political life outside of city hall. With Walmart, I would have marched against them politically, but I'm not gonna cut off my nose to spite my face as a city alder if it had been smart to go with them for development for downtown. And I see no reason why we can't go with this group for what's being offered here, what they're gonna do for us. It is environmentally based. What was mentioned on Facebook, that's all environmentally based. Political parties may group around those things, but what's on, but, but, you know, carbon, talking about carbon, that's not, nothing about politics, that's about the environment. So I do not support going back. We, we need to get going on our green infrastructure. We need to get going on our carbon footprint. Time is running out. Let's move. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Galvin?
Thank you, your honor. For Attorney Bungert, under the agreement, Article 1, it says that Ms. Schmitz will be responsible for administration of the grant. Does that mean the buck stops with her?
Correct.
So if it turns out there are shenanigans, it's up to her to stop it and point it out?
Correct. She would be the staff person appointed with the requisite authority to administer the grant as a representative for the city.
Thank you. While I have not worked that long with Ms. Schmitz, she was vetted, hired and approved by this council. I trust that her best interests are the City of Green Bay and the citizens within it. And I trust that she will administer this grant and if she does see anything wrong, she will take the proper action to stop anything that may try to turn this grant into something political. So I'm not in favor either of referral. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Remember to use your button, Alder. Okay. Alder Burnett?
Thank you, mayor. I, I still support the refer back. We can invite this organization to refer to the committee. We can ask them questions to ensure that the advice that they're giving is based on professional advice and not tinged in any way by their political advocacy. I'm not gonna apologize for trying to get the city government free of special interest influence. If I simply call the question and say, this particular group is going to be receiving dollars through in-kind services of City of Green Bay taxpayers to provide consultant services and they have a political agenda, it is very possible that that political agenda is what's causing them to consult with us and lead us to decisions that we may not find acceptable. So this is the policymaking body of the city government. By simply calling out the fact that organizations that we're consulting or receiving consultant services are, are highly political, that does not make me political. There are impartial organizations out there that are devoted to this work, who are not acting and not politically advocating very strong unpopular positions that I think a majority, not a majority, but a good number of people, if not the majority, would find really questionable when they're going to be advising us on things that should be rather impartial. They are a political advocacy body who is providing consultant work. By simply calling that out and saying that there are possibly other impartial organizations that can provide the same consultant services, that's not me being political. And by the way, to refer back, we can invite Slipstream to that committee meeting and we can answer the question, ask them the question. So refer back is completely appropriate. It's not gonna, it's not gonna sabotage our potential partnership going forward. So I most certainly recommend a refer back. This is an opportunity for the council to say, any consultant, every contract, any services received in the name of City of Green Bay, there's a way to do it in a very non-political way. So that's what I'm looking to do. So refer back. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. It's come to my attention that somebody is on Zoom who would like to speak.
Motion to open the floor.
Motion has been made to open the floor by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Galvin. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the floor is open. Yeah, I don't have Zooms, I don't have the Zoom in front of me. So if the gentleman would just like to unmute themselves, state their name and speak, that would be great. That one turned it off.
And I did not catch the beginning of this discussion, so I apologize if I missed a few finer points here. But as you may recall, our Sustainability Commission presented our work plan at your first meeting of this new council session back in April. And one of the things that we outlined was our goals to help hit our 100% clean energy commitment. So I'm really excited about the opportunity that we have to partner with City Transit and the Water Utility to help us accomplish something that, since we just spoke last April, has become even more urgent, and that's rising energy costs. Whether we like it or not, fossil fuels are becoming more and more expensive. This is a burden both to taxpayers and to consumers like you and I. While there is a lot, there is a lot that we can do as a city to help take the edge off of our energy costs. And luckily, we did see this coming. And we have partnered with the city, or we have partnered with these entities to help us create a roadmap to reduce energy costs for taxpayers going forward. I wasn't planning on coming to this meeting tonight because as when I tuned in, I heard Alder Johnson mention when discussing this with Melissa Schmitz, that council at the end of the day has final approval over any fiscal decisions made. So I'm really excited to map out our energy as a city and as a community, but ultimately to give recommendations to this, this body to be able to save money for taxpayers. At the end of the day, that's your decision, but we're about to embark on something we've been very transparent about and something that we've been building a lot of community engagement around. So I would hope that this council would recognize this fantastic opportunity from the Public Service Commission to help us move some of this really important work forward.
All right. Thank you, sir. Any questions for our guests? A question for Mr.? Okay, Alder Campbell?
I just have a question of, we missed who, who that person was?
I think he said Seth Hoffmeister?
Yeah.
I mean, I couldn't hear it. Seth Hoffmeister.
All right, thank you. He's the chair of our Sustainability Commission. Any other questions? All right, thank you, sir. Entertaining motion to close the floor?
Motion to close the floor.
Motion to close the floor made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stevens. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the floor is closed. I don't have anyone else in my queue here. The motion on the floor is to refer this item back to the finance committee.
Board vote, mayor.
A request has been made to use the board, so we will do that.
Thank you, you may vote. Okay. Now you may vote.
It fails seven to five?
Yes.
Motion fails seven to five. So the motion on the table is to approve. All in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, that item has been approved. Onto item seven. What's up? Oh, sorry. Motion has been made to approve item seven by Alder Scannell and that was seconded by Alder Galvin. That was pulled by Alder Eck. You have the floor.
Yes, and I realize there's going to be a special meeting for this, but I, there was something brought up at the last finance committee that there was like a question about whether the project that Alder Grant and I had presented would be something that would qualify for the ARPA dollars. So I did a little research on it and I came up with several instances where the, the, the ARPA dollars could be used to build a new fire station. And I have the examples, so I just wanted to make sure that that was known prior to our finance committee meeting. I have them right here. And I could read them off, but...
No, I appreciate that. It is a complicated question that staff will be prepared to answer at our, at our next meeting, but appreciate those comments.
Okay, thank you.
Any other thoughts on the special meeting? Alder Grant?
I apologize, I didn't think of this sooner when we were discussing how to decide. I know we originally had spoke about the finance committee making recommendations, but the more I thought about the big picture of how that will look when it comes to council, I guess my question is, does it make sense to amend this proposal and have it be a full council at the 16th? Because otherwise, they're gonna make recommendation, it's going to come to full council, we are going to revote. And if we don't agree with what they recommended, it could blow up the entire recommendation that they initially made. And then we're going through the whole process all over again. So part of me is wondering, that committee is four members out of 12. It's a third of the committee, or council, that's it. Making a recommendation for the remaining large amount of funds left. So part of me, my wheels were spinning, that it almost doesn't make sense to do this twice when we do it once. So I motion to amend it to be a full council meeting on the 16th.
Okay, so you're making a motion to hold a special meeting on Tuesday, August 16th of the Committee of the Whole?
Correct.
Is there a second for that motion?
Second.
Seconded by Alder Campbell. Alder Johnson?
Yeah, if there's certainly any discussion on that, I'd love to, to hear it. I don't really have a strong opinion one way or the other. I, I will just maybe kinda chime in and, and say that my intent with that meeting was for it to be more informational, because I agree, what's, right, we, we, I mean, four of us talk about things and then it comes to full council and then whatever recommendation is made on such a, a heavy topic can easily be turned upside down. So my intent as the chair of that committee was really to, to have it be more informational in nature and, and allow sort of the public to come in and, and speak at that meeting. And then, of course, it would give them a subsequent opportunity to speak at the full council meeting afterwards. So this would kinda limit us then to, to one opportunity for that as opposed to two. Like I said, I just, I don't really have a strong opinion one way or the other on the motion, other than to say that, that I was intending for it to be more informational. Ultimately, the committee would have to make some type of recommendation, what that would be, I, I'm not even sure yet. But, but you're right. I mean, we've, we've seen this before with other issues where they, they come before this body and committee makes a recommendation and the full council adopts something so different. And that, that oftentimes happens, so. But I just at least wanted to give you some context in terms of how I was imagining that, you know, that, that meeting operating.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Galvin and then Alder Campbell?
Thank you, your honor. I, I think Alder Grant makes some sense here. If we spend three, four, five, six hours talking about this on the 16th and then everything gets pulled and we spend three, four, five, six hours at a regular council meeting, I, I don't think that's fair to every other constituent that may be there for other things that wanna speak. I mean, we've seen people leave the floor here and go home without any opportunity to speak because we've gone on and on about some things that we just don't agree on. So I, I think there might be some merit to that. I mean, if we're gonna spend a lot of time on this thing, let's do it. And then when we take it to council, that'll pass through for the most part. It should, because we'll have agreed on everything in advance and we can spend time, five, six, seven hours talking about other stuff. But at least it's spread out more that way.
Thank you. Sounds good. Alder Campbell and then Alder Eck?
Yeah, I support, I seconded it to, you know, look at it. I, I listened in on the committee meeting, too, and I, I like the one thing that struck me about the idea here. And I thought it was somewhat a discussion, thank you for bringing it up, is for each person that put in the grant to like present it, just like we do to the public when they come up to the podium here and state their side of the story. But I mean, this is a way bigger deal. I think it, the author of it should, should have a big part of it, you know, either from influence and someone that's passionate about how hard they worked to get there and, and such. And, and then we can hear everybody's point. If he was, then I think we can come to a closer decision, one way or the other, how to sort this out.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Eck?
And, and I echo what Alder Galvin said, and I, so I think that it makes sense about... And, and I echo what Alder Galvin said, and I, so I think that it makes sense about being able to work it out and not take the time during a regular city council meeting. But my request would be if we could make it where it's the hybrid, where we could be in person in the council in addition to Zoom. Please.
Yeah, and if, if we were to hold a meeting of the Committee of the Whole, kind of as, as Alder Campbell was referring to, it would be in here. It'd be like a meeting of our, of our common council, but sort of like as Alder Galvin said too, it would then still need to come back to our, our full council meeting at the end of, end of August. So yes, it would, yes. So, I mean, this is something that we haven't discussed a whole lot, but the actions of our Committee of the Whole, generally speaking, cannot stand on their own. It actually does need to come back to our common council. So I don't know, Attorney Bunker, if you want to weigh into that at all?
Yes. So Committee of the Whole essentially functions as the same authority as any other standing committee, but it's just comprised of the entire council. But it's council acting as a committee, not with the full authority of council. So the way that we have been doing it in the past before hasn't been entirely accurate. But what, what usually happens with Committee of the Whole items is there's an, an item for discussion at Committee of the Whole, and then usually a corresponding resolution or a corresponding ordinance, which that is then adopted by council as a whole with the authority of council. So in this situation, if there are corresponding resolutions that go with the different expenditures, then everything can be taken care of in one meeting. But I think my understanding is these are just essentially proposals. So then, that would then being approved by council as a committee, and then that will go to council as a whole with full council authority at the following meeting with any corresponding resolutions.
Thanks, Alder. Did somebody still have the floor? No. Alder Galvin?
I'll, I'll.
You're good. Alder Steyer, and then Scannell, and then?
I was just looking to piggyback off of what Bunker said.
Oh, Alder Johnson?
Yeah, I, I just wanted just a bit more clarity, Attorney Bunker. When it's Committee of the Whole, does that then make it a Finance Committee still?
No, it would still be Committee of the Whole. It's just council convening with the authority of a committee, which then is referred to council for council meeting for them to... I know it, it, it's very, it's, it's almost semantics, but that's, that's the way that the procedure, procedure should be, and that's the way it's divided out.
Okay. Thank you.
So it's still, it's, it's not a Finance meeting, so it, it won't be noticed as a Finance Committee meeting. It'll be noticed as a council meeting, and the only agenda item will be a Committee of the Whole item.
So there is a binding authority that could occur there with the, the subsequent resolutions to follow at a future meeting?
If there are, yes. If there are resolutions at that same meeting, then council can vote on those with its full council authority behind it. But because of the fact that there's going to be so many discussions, and because the intent was more for, you know, informational and having discussions and figuring out how to suss it all out, my guess is probably we won't have any final resolutions for council to adopt at that time, but it'll come back at the next meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
And we haven't, to this point, I don't think, used resolutions for the individual...
For any of the ARPA, yes. I, I wasn't sure what the process was exactly, but if there were.
Okay. Alder Steyer, and then Scannell, and then?
You know, I said, you know, on Zoom, I, I did, I was at the, I was at the meeting talking about our August 16th meeting coming up. And I, you know, I understand that it seems like each of the Alders will have an opportunity to speak to the projects that they have in the diocet. And I, I think one of the things that Alder Grant brought up a little bit, and maybe my worry a little bit, is the fact that there are so many projects out there, and each one of us has invested somewhat because we brought these things forward. And, you know, the challenge to me is that, you know, I plan on being at this meeting. I'm not in the committee, but I think, you know, I would think that each Alder that thinks it's important would be at that meeting. So I guess it'll be difficult. I, I think myself, if there was a project that I really believe in and I want to go through, I, I feel that I'm good or strong enough to say, okay, that's fine, as long as it's vetted well. And whoever, you know, the council decides that, you know what, I think this is important. But, you know, a lot of us have investment in this, and I know citizens also have investment in this as well. So that's the area that I'm having a hard time with. I just want to make sure that, my, my thought was with this meeting coming up, that we'd have a chance to speak, to vet ourselves, to really get out there and, and speak to it. And kind of a sales pitch, you know, and if other council members say, you know what, that's a great idea, let's move ahead with it. So I just plan on doing the best I can there. But if it doesn't work out for me, I'm not going to lose sleep over it. So it's more of a, more of a, you will. It's more of a, it's more of a comment than anything else. So I, you know, the Committee of the Whole, that's a whole nother animal too. But I plan on being at the meeting regardless.
Thanks, Alder. Scannell?
Since we can speak at Finance Committee, you know, Alders, I'm not sure, I mean, organizationally, is it more efficient to have it, a, a, a Committee of the Whole as opposed to just having the Finance Committee meet with Alders piping in from the back? I don't know which, which, I, I mean, I'm for whatever's more efficient. Because I, I don't see much difference if, since no, we can't, since we can't have a meeting that would finalize everything, then I'm not sure what the, what, if it makes much difference if it's the Finance Committee meeting and we all show up, or if the Committee of the Whole, as far as being efficient. I would like to have, I, I, I don't know. Does anybody have any ideas on what might be more efficient?
I mean, it's a little subjective, but I mean, it requires essentially all of council to be present for the discussion.
Well, at least, at least a quorum.
Right. But, yeah. So just, efficiency is probably another question, but it does require all of council to participate, or at least a, a quorum of council. Alder Weir, did you still have?
Yeah, if I could, thank you. More of an informational question here, I guess. What would be the difference than, instead of a Committee of the Whole, of just a special council meeting? It's a council meeting, just handling this one item. Then you, that way you're not a Committee of the Whole, you're not going through all those little semantics or whatever. You just have a special council meeting handling this issue. That's my question. Thanks.
Essentially, then, you would have to hold this item over to the next council meeting. But council acts on, the way that the process is, is council acts on things with final approval authority based on the recommendations done by standing committees. So standing committees have their own delegated authority under our ordinance, and then council has final approval authority over those recommendations. So in this way, you're kind of going over the committee. So it, it either needs to go back to Finance for some sort of decision, either that it be giving council or deferring the entire question and item to council, and then council acts on it under a Finance Committee report item, or it acts under, under a Committee of the Whole item. Does that make sense?
Well, and I appreciate that. My, the reasoning would be, we give a lot of committees the final power to act on our behalf.
Sure.
We would just be giving ourselves the power to act at council. It's, it's the same thing.
You could, you could give council, the, council could give itself final approval authority as a Committee of the Whole.
All right.
Right.
If we want to do that, I don't know.
Right.
That, that is an option. Thanks.
If, if we wanted to do that, Attorney Bunker, though, we would have to schedule a meeting to take that, take that action?
Correct. Correct. Yes.
Okay. Uh, who do we have? Alder Brunette, and then Alder Hutchison?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Question, though, it doesn't matter to me either way, but who would be the chairperson? Would it be the mayor or the finance chair, which would be Alderman Johnson?
I think Committee of the Whole is traditionally.
For you, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's, like I said, that, that was just a thought that came to my mind.
Yeah. Okay. Alder Hutchison, and then Alder Grant?
Just a, a question about, there's some projects, there's a handful, that speed is of the essence. And I wondered, is there a mechanism, in any event, that we could give approval for that in the next meeting, or does it all have to come and get approved? Just wondering. Thank you.
I think, I mean, I, I think what we'd be, we could attach resolutions to these pressing items that staff has identified, and then give Alders the...
Correct. Correct. So we could have resolutions prepared in advance and have that under the Resolutions tab as we normally would. And if they are approved under the Committee of the Whole item at that meeting, as presented or as amended, then the resolution, the resolution, if there are, however it's presented, it can be adopted at that same time. Or it can be amended at the report item and then approved or adopted as amended at the resolution. So council would still have the authority to act on things in its full authority, just not under a Committee of the Whole item. So if there's anything that's not, doesn't have a corresponding resolution to it, then that would come back to the next council meeting, which I think would be two weeks later.
Yeah.
Because that, it's the 16th, correct?
Mm-hmm.
And then council's on the 30th.
Okay, so if, there could be actions that allow projects to start. Is that what?
Potentially, yes. Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, on the 16th.
So for example, I can't remember, I know that the cybersecurity item was listed as an emergent request.
There's one, there's one for the fire.
Or pressing request?
Yeah, like $25,000 for the fire department. I know they want to get that study going, something like that.
Right. So that, I mean, that could be something that staff would, you know, determine and then
Right.
Provide resolutions for those pressing items.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Alder. Alder Grant?
Sorry, I just had a question because efficiency was brought up. So when we're Committee as a whole, can we vote to make a recommendation to full council, and then on the 30th, we would collectively then finalize it and move on from there?
If you think of it exactly as a standing committee, except it's made up of all of the council members.
Okay.
That's how it functions. Thank you.
Alder Scannell?
Would staff have enough time to make some resolutions on some, on some of the items that are considered?
For the 16th?
Yeah.
I think that all kind of depends on each department.
Is that asking too much?
Yeah. I, I don't know if I can speak for all the departments.
I don't think there would be a lot of requests that fall into that category, cybersecurity. And then I think Director Honig was talking about the meeting room, because there's an 18-month lag time potentially on all the equipment to make these upgrades. So if something went down, we'd be waiting an awfully long time. So those are two examples, but I can't recall. Director Allenbacher?
As you mentioned earlier, we haven't been using resolutions to, to approve ARPA requests. So this would be something different, out of the ordinary than what we have been doing?
It would be. And I think it would only be used for these quote unquote, emergency projects. It's not something that we would need to or want to adopt for the rest of them.
Mm-hmm.
But if we wanted to have final decision authority on that 16, at that 16th meeting, this is one way we can do it.
So i- if we did that, it would no longer be noticed as a Committee of the Whole, it'd be noticed as a special?
It's still, it's still noticed as a special meeting of council. The agenda item is Committee of the Whole versus having Finance.
Okay. Well, I, doesn't matter to me, but I, I think I can support it, and, and hopefully, if there's some resolutions there, we can actually do some work. And if not, well, oh well. Right, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Alder. We had a good discussion. There was a motion to essentially amend this item, to turn the Finance Committee into a Committee of the Whole. That was offered by Alder Grant and seconded by Alder Campbell. All in favor will signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? The ayes have it. The item has, or the amendment is successful?
Motion to approve as amended.
Motion to approve as amended, made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stevens. All in favor will signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? The ayes have it. That item succeeds. On to the Park Committee.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stevens. Item's here to be handled separately.
Three.
Item three. Any others? Hearing none others. All in favor of approving the remainder of that report, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? The ayes have it. The report has been approved with the exception of item three.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell. Is there a second? Seconded by Alder Grant. The item was pulled by Alder Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. So generally speaking, I'm supportive of this item. There's just one request that I have. And, and essentially, you know, there was that, I think it was a four-step process that inspections typically follows. You know, this is step one. Step one was going to be that blanket letter to anybody that touches nearby park property. Step two was going to be then to document any violation, or excuse me, was actually give the reinspection fee right away for anybody that doesn't correct anything that's out of compliance within 30 days. I'd like, I'd like to request that maybe we take a softer approach to that because my fear is individuals that might be in violation, but they don't know they're in violation, right? Maybe they're, they're cutting the grass next door, they've got a fence or a piece of property up, and they, they don't even know that they're out of compliance. And our first action is really going to be this letter. They don't know they're out of violation, so they, they ignore the letter. And then the very next communication they get from us is a reinspection fee. And they don't even know why they're getting the reinspection fee. So that's my fear. And, and so I support, you know, recapturing the, the property. But I'm wondering, Director Dishay, can we just maybe add an additional step that, instead of the first action being the reinspection fee, step one is again, blanket letter. Step two is, we do the reinspe, we do the, the reinspections, but instead of issuing the citation, we say, you are out of compliance, this is what you need to do to correct. Then step three is the reinspection fee. Would you have any objection to that?
I wouldn't have any objection to that. I think that we could add that step and still make it successful.
Okay. I, again, I just, I hate the heavy-handed approach, you know, when, when folks may not know that there's a problem. And I'd like to just see a softer approach that, that works with our, our residents. So I would actually make that as a motion to amend it by adding that step between one and two, that says that we document the violation, any violation that continues to exist, and we send that communication directly to the property owner for correction within 30 days.
Motion has been made to make the amendment, as, as Alder Johnson stated, seconded by Alder Galvin. Alder Campbell's in the queue on the, on the amendment?
Oh, before that. I have a question for Dr. Dishay, Mayor, some clarity, clarity legally on the process. Because I think it falls a lot under an inspection department. And I know if we're talking about the whole parking thing as an example, what's good for some isn't good for others. So we're trying to break that down. I think that's what we're trying to do here is break it down. It becomes very touchy because I think you're, could be biting off the fact that the way the inspection department handles it now, you're treating this Greenway thing really no different than any other violation in town. And I think you're going to have to balance somewhere along the line, you're going to say, well, why can't we have this all the way around? I'd be all for that. My constituents would be all for that. We all try to do that, what we can. I, I mean, I think you just got to look at it legally of how you're amending not one thing, just for this Greenway, which is just a simple violation, still ordinance. So I think, you know, we have to look at carefully how we're going to treat one and the other. You can't, you can't have both sides, I, I think.
Could I speak to that, Mayor?
Yeah, Alder Johnson?
Yeah. And I appreciate that feedback, Alder Campbell. And I think if we were changing that, I, I would agree with you. I think the difference here, though, is step one with this parks process is just a blanket letter saying, these are the rules, but we're not telling people that they're out of compliance. Because there, this letter may go to a lot of people that aren't out of compliance. And, and so it's just saying, you, you may, you're next to a park, you may be out of compliance, you may not be, but if you are, you should fix it. I think the difference between that and what the inspection department currently does is if you are out of compliance, you are sent a letter, and you're told you're out of compliance, and you're told what it is. And then given an amount of time to fix it. So all I'm asking is that, step, we kind of have this, this blanket letter that isn't normally part of the inspection process. So I just want to see that additional clarity brought into that, that next step.
Director Dishay, anything to add on that?
No, as I said before, I think that we can make that work, and I think that's a valid point, that yes, the difference is we are sending the blanket letter where the inspection department typically does not.
Thank you. Alder Eck?
Okay. Well, I, and I'm on the Parks Committee. So I, my understanding, because it said all, the, a letter to all directly adjacent property owners identifying the possible encroachment issues. So I understood that is, is explaining that they're encroaching. From what I'm getting from you, you're saying we're sending it to every resident in the city and letting them know about these things, or so, okay.
So our intention was going to be to send a blanket letter explaining what encroachment is and notifying people that if they're doing it, they should stop. Along with that, we were planning on attaching a map of each individual parcel, just a standard air photo... Just a standard air photo, it shows the property lines, it shows the adjacent greenway, and they would get a copy with that initial letter. With this new approach, maybe we don't put that map in that first letter. Maybe we put the map in the second letter to only the individuals that we, we feel are encroaching. So we could take that approach and give more information with the second letter with an attached map.
I'm all for more information. I just, I did wanted to clarify that at Committee, we, I assumed it was more specific to the people that are encroaching.
Got it. Thank you, Alder. Any additional comments on that amendment? Seeing none. All in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The ayes have it, the amendment is successful?
Motion to adopt, or?
Motion to approve as amended, made by Alder Scannell.
Second.
Seconded by Alder Johnson. Any further discussion? Alder Campbell?
Is there going to be somewhat of a definition of what we all discussed here in the last half hour, as far as in-person? I mean, this is about amending it to change the rules for, say, the process to represent each of our requests. I mean, that's all, just clarifying here.
Say that again?
I mean, are you going to write it all up in the amendment?
In the minutes?
To be in-person at this meeting? Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, you're on the previous question?
Yeah.
Okay. All in favor, that's right, all in favor of approval as amended, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The ayes have it, and that item has been approved. Personnel?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stevens. Item's here to be handled separately. None. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The ayes have it, that report has been approved. Traffic Bicycle and Pedestrian Commission?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Ek. Items here to be handled separately. Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The ayes have it, that report has been approved. EDA?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Johnson. Items here to be handled separately. Seeing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The ayes have it, that report has been approved. Sustainability?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stevens. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The ayes have it. Receive and place on file?
Motion to receive it and place it on file.
Motion to receive and place on file the building report for June 2022 and municipal court report from June 2022 has been made by Alder Scannell. Seconded by Alder Ek. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The ayes have it, and those items have been received and placed on file. Resolutions?
Motion to suspend the rules.
Motion to suspend the rules and take up these items with one roll call vote was made by Alder Scannell. Seconded by Alder Weary. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The rules are suspended. Entertained a motion?
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt, made by Alder Scannell, was seconded by Alder Johnson, and we will use the board on the adoption of these resolutions.
Thank you, you may vote.
And those are adopted unanimously. Ordinance is first reading.
Motion to suspend the rules.
Motion to suspend the rules, take up these items with one roll call vote, made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Weary. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The ayes have it, the rules are suspended.
Motion to go forward.
Motion to advance, made by Alder Scannell. Seconded by Alder Stevens. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. That motion is successful, and those ordinances have been advanced to a second and final reading. Committee of the Whole.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, made by Alder Johnson, seconded by Alder Galvin. Any discussion here? Seeing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The ayes have it, and that item has been approved. Petitions and communications. Alder Brunet?
Thank you, Mayor. Here, this goes to protection and policy for consideration and possible action in creation of a policy stating, "For the purpose of transparency to the common council and the public, it shall be the policy of Green Bay government to request all staff from the mayor's office, clerk's office, and members of senior management to disclose and explain in reasonable detail any coordination, collaboration, or request of assistance to or from all election advisors, political parties, consultants, advocacy groups, election outreach groups, nonprofits, non-governmental organizations, venues, or similar types of organizations or individuals in regard to get-out-the-vote-style efforts, voter outreach, election processes, analytics, or targeted marketing, voter registration events, or early voting community events that could favor one demographic or political preference of voters over any other or all other demographic groups of voters."
All right.
Protection and policy, please.
Thanks, Alder. Any others? Motion to refer. Alder Grant?
Just as we're approaching the school year, I'd like to review what possible action on the crossing guard contract, just the efficiency of it, incentives and costs that goes into it.
Would that be personnel or finance?
Personnel.
Personnel, okay. So noted. Any others? Motion to refer?
Motion to refer.
Second.
Motion to refer has been made by Alder Stoyer, seconded by Alder Brunet. All in favor, say aye. Oppose nay. The ayes have it. Those items have been referred. Adjournment? Motion adjourned made by Alder Stoyer, seconded by Alder Scannell. All in favor, say aye. Oppose nay. The ayes have it, we're adjourned. Thanks, everyone.